Chinese suit?
Chinese.
Made out of algae?
Well, good morning to everyone. It is nine o'clock. We're getting ready to begin our meeting, November first, 2016. We always like to begin with prayer. We're gonna ask Pastor Gary Morris, Pastor of Life Church, to come at this time. Open us up with prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you offer, please stand with us.
Thank you. Our scripture for today says that the Lord is close to all who call on Him, yes, to all who call on Him in truth, and He grants the desires of those who fear Him, and He hears their cries for help and rescues them. Let's believe that He's here this morning, alright? Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before the throne of grace this morning, and I thank you for another day. I thank you for another month, another opportunity to be able just to put our focus on you. So, Lord, I pray this morning, at the beginning of this meeting, right now, that all of our hearts would be turned toward you, and we ask you for help and guidance today, and we do cry out to you in truth and in fear. So, Lord, I'm asking you today to put your hand upon this meeting, upon the city, upon the leaders, and I pray that you, your Holy Spirit, would just guide and direct this meeting to the way that you would have it to go, because we know that you have a plan, and that plan is greater than anything that we could come up with. So, I'm asking you to let your Holy Spirit guide and direct the leaders, the decision-makers today, and let this city be blessed by what happens in this meeting this morning, and we'll praise you forever. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now begin our meeting with, are there any amendments to the agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Concern agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? Routine item number one, resolution amendment, resolution number four, three-nine-seven, incentive program for the Meridian Fire Department.
Move through.
Madam President, this is just a clarification of a recently passed resolution on the incentive program for Meridian Fire Department. Chief Plante here to answer any questions you may have.
Good morning, Councilor.
Good morning.
When I typed up the memo, I did not specify clearly to Joanne, the clerk of the council, what my intentions were. I meant, well, BS degree and AA in fire science. This clears that up. I didn't want to proceed unless I had it clear.
Alright, are there any questions or concerns as it relates to this item? If not, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Routine item number two, order authorizing the city's website upgrade by Leading Edges.
Madam President, we've been working to streamline city services, as well as become more technologically advanced in our departments, especially in our public relations and communications side of the city. We are looking to upgrade the city's website and give it a new look and make it more interactive, giving us the ability to pay bills online, to also use as a recruiting tool for industry, and make it easier for our local citizens to be able to navigate that website. The current website we have is massive. If you were to print it out, it'd be between sixteen and twenty pages. This will shorten it down between six and ten pages and give us the ability to have a lot easier way of navigation. But I do have Tony Pompeo and Lynn Thomas here from Leading Edges, and we can go through this if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Leading Edges?
I have one. You mentioned streamlining bill pay. We currently have, I think we currently have bill pay online. To what extent are we streamlining that? Are we continuing to incorporate the current entity that we utilize for bill pay, or will that be a separate entity?
No, we'd be incorporating that, but also like permitting, for example, for franchise payments, where you have the ability to not just come up here. You can be more interactive on our website.
Good.
In terms of webpages, it's actually a hundred and five, but what they're gonna do, we're at a hundred and thirty now. If you printed it out, it would print, we could print more than one page and we'd have about eleven or something. But in any case, the deal is that several years ago, maybe six or seven, but we went in and refreshed that site, but there's so much information on that site that is not being looked at and doesn't need to be there. We also went out and researched other sites that were very contemporary, looking for cities that are looking to be, they're looking to move forward progressively. And what we identified was a different look. It doesn't look governmental. It looks inviting. It also looks engaging. It's contemporary to target millennials. It's a very good structure. We continue to upgrade our content management system, as well as it's developed, this new site would be developed in responsive design, meaning regardless of the size of the monitor that you had, whether it's your iPhone, your iPad, desktop, it will adjust to that size. So, no more pinching and squeezing, no more need for a mobile site. It's, this site will be state-of-the-art. It will look amazing. Information will be organized. Like said, a citizen goes on and looks at it, they won't be frustrated. Somebody new coming to town looks at it, they'll be encouraged. Business looks at it, they'll feel like that we have our information together, and they won't have to spend the day trying to figure out exactly what it is they need, and which is the purpose of the site. It's for information, direction, and action, and that's what we would like to do with this new site. A lot of big pictures, a lot of good-looking stuff, and at the same time, a lot of good solid content as well.
It also says in the, I guess, the letter, the initial estimate that those provided to us, that you would be providing training to those as it relates to the use of that management system.
Yes, sir.
Did you kind of go into detail on that?
Excuse me, yes, sir. As part of this quote, we will invite anyone over to our agency, or we'll come here, and anyone that will be updating the site, we will train them in the content management system that we have, so it'll be easy for the site to be updated. You don't have to come to Leading Edges to get it updated. It can be updated here or in anyone's office, and we provide that training. And another thing is too, we're just down the street, and you found out from dealing with us, wherever you need information or you need a little guidance, we don't send a bill. We just come help because we're a strategic partner, and you can count on that. So, we will provide the training. What's happened in the past, we provided the training, and then people said, you know what? I need some more training. We're happy to do that. Our goal is to get the site up and going, and then also allow you to use it the way it's intended, and that is to be able to update it yourselves, and if we can provide support for that, we'll do it.
You all had had like a sample city at the work session. What city was that, maybe some of the other council members might wanna?
That was Carl from South Carolina, the Chamber of Commerce site, and if you click on that site...
Oh, you have tapped this one?
You'll see that they utilize drones, high elevations, they show their assets in their city, people in action, and it gives you a real feel for what's going on in that city. And that's what we're looking to do here with this new website, is when we look at it, you know where you're coming from. We can exploit our assets. One's the mayor's area, my areas of office area. It's often to our congressional delegation, as well as our state leadership. They say about, we need to revamp our inventory to the city. That's not just brick and mortar with upgrades to Twenty-second Avenue and bringing people into the city. That's also in technology, as far as, you know, on the web, being able to navigate and comfort this city via the internet.
I know at MML, that's one of the hot topics, you know, is making sure that when businesses and potential people that might want to live here, technology is the way moving forward, that people check out your city before they actually step foot.
Right before, right before they get here.
You only get one chance to make a good first impression. Are there any other questions?
They decide we want to sell ads or links. We can do that now, too, if that...
Ads, we have the ability to sell ads, links, yes, sir.
That's a good...
Source of money for them.
And we need money.
Many cities now sell space on their website, at least links to their website.
The great thing about building this and the structures built in it is easier for us to update, too, so we can make whatever changes going forward. The goal will be to keep this site current, and not only to keep it current in terms of information, but also keep it current in terms of its structure and its navigation, its overall work.
Never found in history this nation, a website we discuss so much.
Any additional questions, concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all, and thanks for the opportunity to serve the city. We appreciate it.
Routine item number three, order authorizing submission of grant application to Game Time for playground equipment.
Madam President, Mr. McGruder continues to work to try to streamline his department and upgrade his facilities. This is an impressive upgrade to this park. I'm gonna let Mr. McGruder explain exactly what's going on and what he's trying to accomplish within his department.
Morning, Councilor.
Good morning.
In the past, we've talked to you in depth about upgrading the playground and as well as the facilities in the park. We have opportunity with Game Time to not only do a new playground at the south side of James Chang, but also to upgrade the playground at Highland Park. These playgrounds will be ADA compliant, so what we're asking Council for today is permission to go forward with this for Game Time. This is a matching grant. We have some matching funds that we have set aside to offset the costs of this new playground and upgrades.
We've been getting a lot of conversation from different residents of the city concerning our playgrounds and parks not being ADA compliant, so I appreciate you hearing the voice of our citizens and trying to move forward in that area.
We do something at Highland Park. We're gonna do something with the restrooms also.
Yes, sir. As you remember, Dr. Thomas, the council approved the budget and gave extra money. We've already started upgrading the playgrounds in northeast parks for ADA compliance, and we have one at Velma Young that we're doing it, and we're addressing one at Highland Park going forward.
I wish we would post signs that playgrounds and ball fields prohibited animals on them. Like when a kid comes down the slide and urine or feces on the playground. Some way, somehow, they need to be large and prominent, that you don't bring animals on the playground. It's bad enough that they get on the athletic fields, which they shouldn't do. Also, some people seem to think that parks and playgrounds are places to run your animals, and they don't. They take care of the animals, but they don't. In revamping these playgrounds, we need to put some laws. Also, sign in the state law, you're not smoking in a hundred feet of any event where there are children participating, and you still lack those signs. Some of the signs are halfway up the field. They need to be a hundred feet away from the field. Particularly at northeast softball complex, signs are within the facility. They need to get the entrance of the facility.
You know, with the new maintenance division, Dr. Thomas, we'll address that going forward, and I'll make this plan, and I'll talk with the staff, and our staff will be about it.
We have the ability to print signs in-house.
It just don't like, you know, we need to make it state law.
Yes, sir.
Signs should be an easy fix, so we can do that soon.
Real soon.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Routine item number four, order authorizing acceptance of grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for bulletproof vests.
Madam President, this is a grant from Bureau of Justice, and Chief Dubose continues to strive to find outside funds to supplement his department's budget, and he can give you the particulars on this particular grant.
Good morning, Councilor.
Good morning.
This particular grant is one we apply for annually. It allows us to purchase bulletproof vests for our officers at fifty percent of their cost. We have a fifty percent match with the Bureau of Justice, and like I said, it's an annual thing we do. It allows us this year to purchase seven to ten vests, depending on state contract question.
And all we can buy?
No, that's all we budgeted for. We have ongoing programs with this bulletproof vest from last year, the year before, and we're doing maybe at seven to ten vests at a time increments. The vests are good for five years. It states that the vests are specifically designed for each individual officer, but that's not to say that if I buy a vest for Officer A, he leaves, Officer B might come in and be able to wear the same vest. So, we purchase them in increments. We don't go out and purchase fifty or sixty at a time, so it wouldn't make a lot of sense.
You end up buying thirty new police, which are authorized to do. Do they have vests?
We will have vests, yes, sir.
Just looking at the numbers, figures, grants for twenty-four fifty, two thousand four hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah.
City's gonna match two four fifty, which has already been budgeted before in the current years, but...
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Routine item number five, order authorizing execution of contract with Volkert Inc., Engineering Consultant on Highway eighty pedestrian improvements.
Madam President, this goes back to Mr. Smith acquiring a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for pedestrian improvements, and he worked through a process to get Volkert Engineering. They are a massive engineering firm. They have a vast array of services, as well as locations they worked at. I'm Mr. Smith here to tell you exactly what Volkert would be doing.
Good morning, Councilor.
Good morning.
As Mr. McAllister said, this goes back to the grant that was awarded by MDOT to make improvements to pedestrian walkways along Highway eighty. That grant is seven-hundred-thousand dollars. This contract has been reviewed by MDOT, and it does meet their criteria for grant award. So, basically, we're at a point to enter negotiations or to sign a contract, then do the design work, as well as the construction, engineering, inspection portion of the project.
Explain to the public why we need a consultant to build sidewalks.
It's more to it than just building sidewalks. If you can imagine, there are crosswalks. There are areas where you have to put drainage structures in because the terrain is either subsurface or below. And also, MDOT is very cautious in regards to pedestrian safety. So, any grants that they award must meet a specific criteria in order to ensure the safety of the public.
I'll just give you an idea of, just pouring a sidewalk doesn't seem as easy as it sounds, just, you know, pouring a, you know, a square surface and, you know, treating it out and being done. You know, some of this, you know, concrete has got to be a certain slump. It's got to have a certain moisture content, and it's got to have a subsurface that's not gonna crack over time, that it is very much so needed and required by MDOT.
Mr. Smith, based on your experience and certification qualifications in doing this type of work, understanding how this work is to be done, is this something that potentially we would be able to do in-house, and that our guys would be able to be trained to do consistent with the seven-point-five million dollar bond issue that we're already accommodating?
Let me kind of preface your question. One, MDOT has a prescribed method in which they award their grants. So, even if we, and we can build sidewalks, so that's not really the question. The question is the process in which the sidewalk is designed and laid out. Most of the stuff we would do in-house is more repair or maintenance on existing sidewalks. When you take on projects of this size, I don't imagine that you would ever give me seven-hundred-thousand dollars in a line item account to go out and build sidewalks with. So, hence, we're back at a, you know, a grant process. In order to receive those funds, you must follow their method of approval, basically. So, hence, they have pre-selected consultants that they, you know, feel comfortable with it due to design, and I go back to the safety aspect, those crosswalks, the proper signage, and things of that nature. So, it's more to it than just the facet of constructing the sidewalk. It's making sure you have a structure that meets the MDOTs or the federal highway guidelines in regards to the safety of the pedestrian public.
Let me get some additional clarity. Not withstanding the fact that we currently have about seven-hundred-thousand dollars to do that. If we were to do it on a smaller scale, would we be able to incorporate the smaller scale into existing maintenance and repair?
The short answer is yes.
Thank you.
Based upon the billets that I'm requesting this morning, based upon the equipment that we talked about buying, the short answer is yes.
Question I asked you last week, what cities have you talked to where they've done this work?
Mobile is the city that they do work for. Birmingham, Alabama, is the city they do work for, and in fact, they've actually done project management for MDOT on projects such as this.
Other than Mobile, you've not spoken to any?
Said Birmingham.
Sir?
And they're, Birmingham, Alabama.
You did talk to Birmingham?
Yes, and as I said, they actually do this work for MDOT from the standpoint of...
I'm not interested in that. I asked you about cities you contacted. You've told...
I named two to you, sir.
Okay. When's the start date? When's the stop date?
The start date of this contract will depend upon when the design is completed, as well as when the contract is built.
When will the design be started and completed?
Once the contract is signed, they will immediately go into the design phase. We expect that will take approximately three to four months. The construction is also looking to be about six months.
My question again, is there a start date? Is there a stop date?
As I've said, once the contract...
You said there is.
The start date will be the signing of the contract. The end date will be approximately twelve months later.
So, there is no stop date?
I said approximately twelve months later.
So, there is no stop date?
If you want me to...
I've asked you, logic, after logic, after logic.
Let's see, the day is October, I mean, November the first. The end date will be November the first of 2017.
That's in the contract.
I can, if you would feel better, I would put that in the contract, and if I have to come back for amendments to that contract, would you be willing to entertain those amendments?
I'd be willing. I asked you this before, before you bring stuff to us. You're asking us to...
Dr. Thomas.
Agree with you. I'm for the project.
Okay.
We have too many projects that just go on and on and on.
I'm only aware of a couple of projects that we've taken on to this...
That's too, too many.
And the results of those projects have been very positive, by the way.
For some things.
So, Mr. Smith, once the contract is signed...
Correct.
And all of that, do you think at that point you'll be able to give us a little bit more...
Absolutely.
Headway on what the timeframe might be?
Once the, after the contract is completed, absolutely.
You want us to approve a contract?
And if you're looking at your package as far as actually construction schedule...
You'll let me call, please, sir?
There's a construction schedule in your package that gives you an idea of how long this will take. Did you take a chance to look at it, Dr. Thomas?
I read it. I didn't take a chance. That's my job.
Well, based upon that construction schedule, it'll give you an idea of when the expected completion date should be.
In the future. I'm on both parts. When you bring a contract up here, don't ask us to approve it, and then you go out and work on start and stop dates. Bring us that before you come up here.
I would assume, Dr. Thomas, based upon the contracts we've done in the past, that you would understand the flexibility that's required to complete this project in a, you know, a positive manner. But that being said, I'll, you approved to vote for it, so I'm gonna stop right there.
We know about assumptions.
We appreciate you all listening to the citizens in that area. That has been a major cry, and I appreciate, you know, you listening to me fuss and complain and on you about trying to find some grant money so that, because we have people in wheelchairs, those roller scooters, children trying to get to school every single day, and traffic is very heavy over there. So, I appreciate you all taking a step forward to try to make sure that our citizens are safe on that side of town.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Routine item number six, order authorizing agreement for equipment add-on with the invoice cloud for credit card readers.
Councilwoman Houston, this is another effort that's being made in financing records to streamline services, and this is with credit card readers. I have CFO David Woodford here to answer any questions you may have.
This request is to get four credit card readers at a cost of sixty dollars a month to the city to be used by financing records, along with community development, to process credit card payments for utility billing, privileged licenses, and building permits. This is an upgrade to what we have today.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Routine item number seven, order authorizing billets and approving salary range for Parks and Recreation Department.
Madam President, these are positions that have been budgeted for. They were on the last agenda and were tabled, I believe, and this is another effort that Mr. McGruder is making to enhance the services that he provides to the public, and he can answer any questions you may have on these two positions.
Add a director of operations, part of the industry not doing name.
We have restructured the department, so we had a assistant director, and we made that person over to the maintenance person, maintenance director. So, what we're doing is the director of operations is gonna oversee all projects. I just told you about a new playground. We got the new Velma Young Center coming up, got a new splash pad, and we revamped all of the ballparks. So, this person will oversee the day-to-day operation, make sure that those things that we have in place, things that come from the mayor, are being done on a day-to-day basis.
If you're hiring athletics, what do you do if you're not doing name?
If you see in your package, Dr. Thomas, I gave you a list of programs that we've already done, I mean, if you also go back and look at those programs that we came in thirteen, there were eight programs. We had forty-two programs. Majority of the programs were sports-related programs.
Say that again. How many did you have when you first started?
We had eight come in. We have forty-two right now. Out of those forty-two programs, those, most of those, half those programs are sports-related programs. The add-director will work closely with the department to make, ensure that the kids are getting the same benefit they've been getting in the past. We've increased our number of participations for youth sport. We've also facilitated this program for sports that we don't, that do not directly are responsible for. Also, this person, we talked to you about it, but in the agenda said, we'll be able to go out and bring in tournaments. We already have a commitment to one tournament in January, another tournament in April to bring between forty and sixteen to zero.
We could possibly have a senior, and they could...
I've worked on that. I've talked to Ms. Kathy Anderson, and we're working on senior games. Working on senior games.
Look how bold folks you are.
Yeah, we're working on some senior games. We kind of coordinate with state game. Yes, sir.
That's what Mr. McGruder's getting at, is kind of providing, you know, services to our youth and our middle-aged people, but also our elderly, and also our ADA community, giving everyone a chance to play, and he has really, you know, stepped his game up on bringing these programs.
You've had a big jump in special needs soccer.
Yes, sir.
In special needs, I think, softball.
Yeah, we do, we also facilitate the Challenger League for baseball and sound days.
Challenger, yes.
Just to touch a couple of points that we talked about in the work session. At this point, how are they being maintained now?
Right now, we're sharing the duties. So, what I would like to do is for the people that hire those specific duties they are hired to do, that they concentrate on those. Right now, my maintenance guys helping with softball and volleyball. My program persons helping with this program, and we pull some folks from, from custodian. We pull some folks from maintenance. So, all those people are not doing the duties they were actually hired to do. They are sharing the duties. They have their director accountable for all this stuff in one umbrella. He can manage day-to-day operations. Remember, we are not a eight-to-five program. We are night and weekends. So, that person makes sure those programs that we do in night and weekends... So that person will make sure those programs that we do in night and weekends are coordinated and add to those existing programs that we're already doing. We reached out to Phil Defoe, to try to do some, some stuff with them, bring some teams in, do some tournaments. So this person will be very active in engaging the, the community and doing something a little bit different.
Hope we can add some sports that we hadn't had. I saw where several colleges in the state are starting, but cross programs, team home programs, shuffleboard, there are a lot of different, you know, but a lot of other sports that aren't doing something with ball-
I do understand.
-getting it going and hitting.
Sorry.
Great deal with, you know?
Well, no.
Let people have more of your field.
Well, last week, Dr. Thomas, our first opportunity, we partnered with Marion Public Schools. We did an intramural, intramural track and field with elementary kids. So partnering with intramural and bringing that in. The athletic director will be able to make sure that all the kids at elementary schools are participating. He can also reach out to the county schools and maybe, maybe do something as a joint effort.
Yes. I hope there's still a big opportunity for young students.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Markham, you have some more?
I, I have, I have one more. As it relates to these two positions, once they're approved, explain to the public the process for filling those positions.
What we'll do is once the position is approved, I'll give it to the mayor, we'll do an announcement for those positions through civil service, working with Chief Clayton. I know we have a great MOU with, with the MCC, using that process, coming back and doing a, particularly a test or a combination of a test and an interview process.
Okay. But there will be a test for these-
It will be a test based on the needs as far as if we, I'll give it to the mayor to make sure we want to do a joint, like we've done in the past. We've done some test questions, then we take a panel to do some interviews, or we can do a resume qualification. It just depends on the timing and how fast we want to get these, these two people on board.
Okay. And you're comfortable with, I'm looking at directive operations, you're comfortable with the minimum qualifications, being a bachelor's degree or six years of previous experience equivalent?
I am, I am, yes, sir.
One of the things that I think that is important to, for us to all take note of, our parks have been overlooked for so long. Would you, would it be a fair statement to say that if we had certain systems and a redesign, that Planet Playground wouldn't be the way it is, Highland Park, James St. and, that our parks wouldn't be in the conditions that they are? We just recently had to deal with lighting being out, all, the majority of our parks. With this person, the maintenance operator, is that some of the duties that they will have to carry out as far as making sure on a, on a continuous basis?
We have a, we have a comprehensive maintenance plan that we gave to the mayor, and I put some of your package during the, the budget setting, that just, every day they're out checking. I promised you earlier about the bathrooms. We're already, the process of doing the bathrooms. We paint the bathrooms. At Northeast, we upgrade the bathrooms, be a handicap accessible. We fixing one of Bell Me Young that got burned down and making it, making it a handicap accessible. So they're going out on a day-to-day basis, doing routine maintenance that was not done in the past. Was not done in the past. We upgrade the lighting at, at our Planet Playground. We're going to try to upgrade the lighting at Highland Park. We upgrade the lighting on your side of town. So we're doing those things that we haven't been doing in the past. The roofs are leaking, so we're making sure that when they're leaking, if we can't fix them, go ahead and get a contractor to go ahead and fix it. So those are some of the things that they're doing, the maintenance comprehensive plan is a plan, it's, it's step-by-step. They know about it, and we report about it every week, and we get things done. Charlie Turner's doing that, and he's doing extra job, making sure that those things that we do in the park that we're not doing in the past are getting, actually getting done.
I think efficiency is always important. The other concern is I've had people ask about the senior citizens, you know, perhaps getting the trolley and taking them to the football games or doing different things to really address the concerns of our senior citizens. What are your plans? What are you moving forward with the athletic director or whoever? Are you all looking at entertaining to making sure that our senior citizens are not left out?
Yes, ma'am. You also know, Counselwoman Houston, that May is, is Old American Month. So what we're trying to do is, you know, this Saturday, we're doing the open house at Activity Center. So you can, people can come by and see what we actually do. Kathy Anderson does a great job on that, but we've also talked about doing senior games, something that coordinates with state games. It'll be something small, it'll be, we always do billiards, pool. We're trying to do bowling, skate, something that the seniors can get engaged in, and then having a open house, not just once this time, also having it on Saturday when those elderly or the people, and remember now, the senior citizens center is not just for elderly. It's 21 and above. That's why it's called Activity Center. But can it get a chance for those people to engage on a Saturday when it's free time? Now, we got Zoom over there. So it's a lot of stuff that goes on at Center that doesn't know. The back to the trolley is something I'll give it to the mayor about. That's, that's above my pay grade. I can't make that kind of decision. But I would make sure that we engage with him and-
But just thinking outside the box-
Yes, ma'am.
-to make sure that our, our senior citizens are not overlooked.
Definitely. And, and as you, as you discussed earlier, you've mentioned, you mentioned open house-
Yes.
For the Activity Center. That's this Saturday, tend to swell, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McRuder's also been looking at the possibility of implementing senior citizen parks at some of our playgrounds, where you can do calisthenics, where you can, you know, have a, a place to walk, stretch. You know, these are, these are small, high-end tall items that go along the way. And it's funny, you mentioned lacrosse. Mr. McRuder has brought up doing lacrosse and how we could potentially partner up with some of the two banner shot goalie and some senior fouls, you know, starting a lacrosse league and being able to put people from outside the city, and you could have a revenue to them.
And people don't understand, at the Activity Center, there's a walking track behind the center. If you can walk, I mean, it's, it's enclosed, it's, it's a nice area, it's a nice visible area, you can walk around anytime, and it's open to the public.
Dog park, skate park. Are we ready to vote?
No. Don't want you to give it right now, but give us another date. Next week, it's on the carousel building. Don't need it right now.
The carousel, we had to come up with repairs?
Yeah, don't do it now.
Next week. We'll do that. We'll do that.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Routine item number eight, order authorizing billets and approving salary range for Community Development Department.
Ms. President, second.
Madam President, this is for two positions of Community Development. For building inspectors, Mr. Park is here to tell you what to do for expanding our search.
It will help our department be more efficient. It will also expedite our COs for our new business owners to add two new building inspectors for, for Community Development.
What's a CO?
Certificate.
Certificate of Oxford. All right. Public, no, no.
I know, I'm sorry.
You had made mention in previous meetings that when the electrical person or whoever, we only have one person, and when he's out, everything kind of is at a standstill. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
We have electrical inspector, we have a mechanical inspector, we have a plumbing inspector. They take a two-week vacation. It slows down my process for issuing that CO for that person to get in. So the new person will be trained in all different aspects of the job. He'll be a plumber, he'll be electrical, mechanical, all of that.
Can we go back and retrain these other people to do the same thing?
Can we?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We can cross it in each one of them.
I have, I have a couple of questions. I always, I always talk about efficiency when it comes to community development, and when we talked last meeting, or not necessarily last meeting, but the meeting in which we had the public here, and then Mr. Quinn was here presenting 30 structures for demolition. I made a point to say that communication is key to efficiency and consistency. Also training, and being able to cross-train individuals you already have in your office to do several different things in case there is a shortage or lapse or individuals out on vacation, to prevent stand-stairs. So as I've said before, and I know this is surprising, but as I've said before, I'd like to see a lot more efficiency in community development as it relates, y'all are doing some good things. I'd like to see more efficiency and cross-training in community development as it relates to particular issues so that there aren't those stand-stairs or holdups. That's my first position on that. And then additionally, I would still like to see, as I asked today that we had Mr. Quinn here, still like to see some type of consistency or, or willingness from community development and the individuals there to communicate the specific requirements for our processes and procedures so our citizens are educated on those processes and know how to ask those questions necessary to get the assistance they need. As I said before, a lot of citizens know they need help for community development. They know where y'all are located. They know that they need to walk in and ask for somebody after getting at the front desk. They don't necessarily know what term to use, what issue that they're actually facing. So I think we need to make a more collaborative effort and, and concerted effort in educating the citizens as to what community development offers and the, the procedures for getting those things taken care of for them. So for those reasons and others that I communicated before, I'm probably not going to, not going to vote for the additional, additional individuals because I'd like to see some efficiency in where we already are.
Okay. I, I think the web, the new webpage that you go to, Carl, would help us with that, getting the message out to the citizens.
Mm-hmm.
One other thing that was brought to my attention after the hearing that we had is that a lot of times when your people go out, there's no real checklist, there's no real is a, and I witnessed this when I first got in office, somebody asked me to be there when you wasn't in this position now. And I'm sure you, everything I brought to you have took action on. But one of the problems is when, when they get these notifications, they think that they've done everything that they need to do. Your guys come back out and say, oh, it's not finished, but there's no, okay, let's walk through. Okay, what item do I need to do? Taking out that time to make sure that, okay, well, you got this, you got this, oh, you still need to do this right here. So that the citizens that's trying to invest in these dilapidated houses, trying to improve communities, they have a real understanding about what your department is requiring of them before it gets to the point of condemnation or whatever else might be going on. It's more of a, here you are, get it done, call me when it's finished, and that, you know?
Yep.
So we need to make sure that those kind of things are being addressed and that the people are being trained in such a way that we are, are more friendly. I've had people tell me, they're, they won't buy another house in Meridian, you know? And that affects my side of town because I have a lot of abandoned homes and things of that nature that people would love to get their hands on, but moving forward with the checklist, line by line, this is what you need to do moving forward so that we can put those properties back on the tax roll.
Yes, ma'am. We're working on the customer service training for our inspectors. We also, we have different personalities for our inspectors, and we're working on that. We are.
Work hard.
We are.
But I think too, if there was a checklist and this is how we do this, if there's a real process in place every time, and you know, there shouldn't be a lone ranger that decides because this person looks this way, I'm not going to work with them, I'm going to make your way home.
Well, it's not necessarily, we have a checklist, but we have codes that we have to go by. Or maybe the guys need to carry that code out and show-
Right. So if you've, if you've condemned my house for, or put my house on some kind of list for this reason, this reason, this reason, and I'm thinking I got this, this, this done, and you come back out, ask your guys to be specific. Well, no, sir, this overhang still needs to be painted and nailed down.
Okay.
You know? That kind of thing. I think it'll make it a more friendly environment for people to want to get these houses and do something with them.
And Counselwoman, Counselwoman Houston, if I could, that's something that we discussed, we both discussed and raised issues on at that demolition, I mean, at that meeting for demolition. You know, we do have codes in place. We have updated the codes. Counselwoman Hammond's been adamant about that. But then, and, and so we've taken steps to do that. But when we take steps to do that, and we have a uniform code that's supposed to apply, to some extent, there should never be the exercise of discretion as it relates to who gets 90 days to do it, who gets 30 days to do it, who gets added on that list the very next week. There shouldn't be any discretion there. It should be a, a streamlined, either you meet the requirements or you don't meet the requirements, but before I hold you to trial to determine whether or not you met the requirements, here's a list of the requirements and the ample time in which to get those things done. So like I said, some things y'all have done, really appreciate. Some things y'all have advocated for and gotten pushed through, I appreciate. You can see some of the differences, but as far as being consistent, removing the discretion from those that should not be exercised with discretion, and being objective as to each person that comes to you rather than subjecting to the situation, I, I think we need to be better at all of that.
Okay.
We discussed at the hearing, different kinds of signs placed, larger, very obvious signs. Have you made any progress in that?
On the condemnation sign? Yes, I have. Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Routine item number nine, order authorizing billets and approving salary range for Public Works Department.
Ms. President, second.
Madam President, this goes back to some positions that are budgeted for and Mr. Smith's budget, and also with some of the equipment that he has purchased. Do you have any questions? He's here to clarify.
Counsel, we've discussed these positions at some level of detail throughout the budget process, either in, in some work session, so I'm going to just open up with, is there any specific questions or comments that you have, rather than just me talking?
For the public, if you would, give us just a brief rundown of the billets that you were requesting.
Okay. In Division 262, I'm requesting a maintenance manager. That's at our wastewater treatment facility. A wastewater treatment plant is a very highly, highly intensive maintenance process because of the acidic gases that are there, the wear and tear on the equipment. So I'm trying to be proactive in regards to making sure that, that equipment is maintained properly. We just invested, I think approximately $8 million in, in facility upgrades. Also, these are items that are going to be pointed out and addressed by EPA as we get into our, what we call C-MOM program. So these, these, some of these positions are directly related to that. Another example of that would be the closed-circuit TV operator. That's the individual who uses a specialized piece of equipment to look at the actual water, I mean, the sewer lines, the condition of them from the inside. One of the things that we're having to deal with is something called SSO, which is sanitary sewer overflow. You need to be proactive in regards to making sure your pipes are in good integrity, because one of the ways to do that is to put a, a specialized camera in those sewer lines and, and look and assess the condition thereof. So you actually start making repairs prior to failure. Another example of something that will be brought out in the EPA issue is program, a FOG program coordinator. FOG stands for fats, oils, and greases. We need someone who has the purvey of the responsibility to go out and look at grease traps and inspect those on a routine basis where we're not going out after the blockage has occurred and then try to identify who was the cause of it. We're going to be required, there again, by EPA to have a specialized program to address those issues. As I get down to the labor supervisor senior, there's one in Division 267 and one in Division 144. The one in 144 is for the house demolition and the paving program we talked about, some of the new equipment we purchased. of the new equipment we purchased. This would be a supervisor who is responsible for the crews that will maintain and operate that equipment. And the one in Division 267 goes back to a, creating another utility crew, a crew that can address those issues that we identify as we start assessing our sewer system with the camera we're talking about. We know that's gonna create some additional work, because we're moving from a reactive stance to a proactive stance. We need the personnel in place to, to make those repairs. We're also gonna be required to do that by EPA. And as you get down to the equipment operator, I'm asking for four of those, there again, it goes back to the paving and the demolition program we talked about, run the various pieces of equipment, whether it's a dump truck, a bulldozer, or an excavator, that's where those equipment operators will come in, in Division 144. The maintenance worker senior is just a general labor to assist those personnel, the operator and the supervisor, in doing that work, that's also in Division 144. And the utility worker senior goes back to Division 267, which is, there again, they're making repairs to the water sewer line. And finally, the utility worker one, which is in Division 267 also, that's an entry-level position, to allow for someone to come in who does not necessarily have all the experience, but later be promoted up into the, the more professional life.
So, just for the public, a lot of the, majority of the positions that you're requesting are going to be consistent with what we're gonna need anyway, to come into compliance with anything that EPA could potentially mandate?
Correct. Approximately half of those are in regards to that, the other half is to comply, or to, to complete the programs that we've been talking about, being the demolition program and the paving program. As we stated in the, on numerous occasions, various work sessions and council meetings, I will need additional personnel in order to operate that equipment that some we already have on, on, on the yard currently.
Of those positions, how many are entry-level, and then how many require a specific or certifiable skill?
The entry-level positions has approximately only two, the rest of them would be specified, the closed circuit television operator, there's a requirement for some level of experience, either working in, in a sewer system, or having some level of construction background, to understand how, you know, a, a system of water pipes would work. Equipment operator, of course, you know you would have to have some level of expertise in running an excavator, or bulldozer, or whatever, you know, the various pieces of equipment we're talking about. Labor supervisor also, that's not an entry-level slot, so really, only two of these, in my opinion, will be considered an entry-level position.
Thank you.
Any others, specifically?
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Routine item number 10, fiscal year 2017 budget amendment.
Move through. Madam President, this budget amendment is to increase Parks and Recreation Personnel Services by $71,965, this is in support. In the original budget, he was budgeted for one position, the other position, as you will recall, was taken out. This is to fund the other position that you authorized earlier this morning.
Any questions?
These are positions that were in the original request, if we had some questions, I'd pick out and I'd read back.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Routine item number 11, claims docket, there were no amendments to the claims docket. It was not amended in the agenda. It was not amended. It's gonna be the claims docket, the amendments were not, the claims, the agenda was not amended, to add those additional claims docket information in on this meeting, they'll have to be added to the mention.
Next one.
Routine item number 11, claims docket.
Are there any questions on the claims docket?
Questions, you've given me the same answer I've asked before.
All in favor? Any opposed?
May.
Presentation agenda, notification of legal advertisements, a bulldozer, two mayor's report.
Good morning, Counsel.
Morning.
Real quick, I just wanted to throw a few items there. First of all, thank you for the past affirmations on our lighting on the South Side, and also LED lighting that we're gonna be doing from I-20, to the 22nd Avenue Bridge, of course, this LED lighting will, will give us a better opening presence to our downtown area with all of the development and new activity that we have going, coming to downtown. This lighting will improve our attraction, and so thank you guys for approving both of those, it's gonna be very big for our community, as the lighting on South Side has already proven to be, so thank you all for that. Also, thank you for the work that you have done as a team to position our city as the site of choice for Raytheon, and the possible addition of 450 jobs, paying about $80,000 per job to our city. Of course, 39 cities across, across the United States position themselves to be chosen for this defense contractor, we were the chosen city of sight, so that's a big plus for us, for our community, because one major thing that people always say is that, that Meridian never gets anything, Meridian doesn't have the workforce, Meridian doesn't have this, Meridian doesn't have that, but it shows that when we all work as a team, from the city, government, county, of course, MDA and Thad Kaufman's office was huge in, in this deal, but our state and federal delegation, when we all pull together, we can get a lot of things done, and we can continue to put out those myths that we don't have the workforce, we don't have this or that, because of our educational system. When you are attracted to a big industry like we have positioned ourselves, I just think more momentum and more things are to come, so thank you all for the package that you guys put together to help us get that done. Two weeks ago, I was not at the meeting, myself, Mr. Hugh Smith, and Executive Director of EMBDC, Bill Hannah, were in China. As you all know, about a month, month and a half ago, we were invited to a meeting with Algix, and a couple of major players from China, in regards to the role that this company plays in our community, in regards to the role that they play for a city thousands and thousands of miles away in Yishin, China. Algix has created a technology that has saved this community because of the algae problems they have in one of their local rivers from flooding. In the past, this community has been hit with major flooding because of the things that happen from this algae growth, they have been out of water for over a week at a time, shutting down a city with no water for 1.3 million people. The situation with this community is it's not that much bigger than Meridian, yet they have 1.3 million people in the community, so Algix and the technology that they use over there plays a vital role to helping that community in regards to it being a public health concern. Also, one of the partners with Algix, Mr. Shen, is, is one of the, he owns one of the largest wastewater treatment plants in China, he's a partner to the company, Algix, here, but one of the reasons that myself and Hugh also went over there was to look at the technology that they're using over there, because with our issues with EPA, as it was mentioned to me from, from Hugh, most of our equipment, most of this new technology comes from Germany and China, so we were able to see firsthand some of the things that they're doing over there. This guy designs, manufactures a lot of the equipment that we may be able to use in the future, as we address some of our EPA concerns here locally, so it got us a chance to review those things as well. Also, we've been going back and forth on a lot of issues since, since we've all have been in office, especially us new people. And one of the biggest things is to create the culture and the environment in a lot of these departments, to, to address the needs of our community. And in saying that, a lot of the things that we have been talking about, from the demolition of houses, to the seven and a half million dollar bond issue to pave our streets, I wanna thank you all for working with us, because it's three of the, the department heads said today, you know, it's difficult when you go from eight programs in Parks and Rec to 42, and you only have 25 to 27 people in your department. It's hard in community development, when you see all the growth and expansion in your community and bulldozers everywhere, when you only have 25 people, to efficiently continue to run that program. And we have been cross-training people, we have been doing a lot of things a little bit differently, but the main thing that we've been doing is, we have been changing this environment, from it not being a non-business friendly, to a business-friendly community, and, and changing the, the mindset of employees within departments on how we address some of these issues. So I wanna thank you guys for what you did this morning, to approve these positions in public works and community development, and in Parks and Rec, so that we can more efficiently do our job. And, and in saying that, I also wanna thank you for what you did when we were going and approving the pay adjustment for police and fire departments. We have had over 32 to 35 applications in police department since that decision, that 'll give Chief DuBoltz the ability to go out right now and get more qualified officers, so that we can have more officers in our community protecting our, our citizens and protecting our streets. So that was very, very big, in us being able to continue to do our job. Next, I want to thank, or say that one of our companies here, Southern Pike, has done business for over 78 years in our community, was voted one of the best businesses in the United States to work for. Of course, their main office is on Highway 39, Mr. Marty Davidson and Jay Davidson are CEOs of that company. It's a very big deal to be ranked in Fortune Magazine, it's one of the top companies in the United States, so that's another thing for one of our businesses here that are locally, that have been doing business for years, to get a caduce, because that's, that's very important when you are one of the top companies in all the United States, and I just want to see a shout-out to them, because they were in our Sunday edition of the Meridian Star with one, being one of the top companies in the US. Also, the next time we see each other on November 15th, there will be a new President of the United States, of America, so I'm asking all those people out there, you know, we always talk about, the local people, the local elections are the most important, but before we see each other again, there will be a new President of the United States, and I'm asking everyone to go out and vote next Tuesday, November the 8th. And the last thing I want to say, it was a very fatal accident in New County last night, we wanna pray for those families. But again, what I wanted to communicate to you guys was, no matter when we agree or don't agree on things, that we are a team, we collectively either get things done for this city, or don't get things done for this city. The bottom line of it is, every Monday at 9 o'clock, we talk about the things to address the needs of our community. We can't move forward on a lot of those issues without the money and the resources to get it done. Thank you all for voting on the things you voted home for this morning, I know most of them were already in the budget, but at the end of the day, we can't move forward until you all approve the bill, and to you all pool the resources, so thank you all for that.
Couple of questions, for public information. Several weeks ago, we agreed to contract with some A.D., with APAC, when is that gonna start?
Actually, APAC is already started, they have completed Sweet Gun Bottom Road, been in the process of repairing the curb and gutter of 10th Avenue. I got word this morning that it possibly will be a couple more weeks before they go out and pave 10th, and then they're gonna move over to, I believe, 23rd, so that process has already begun. How much they'll get done this year, now, this late in the fall, is heavily dependent upon how the weather, you know, continues to cooperate, but we're already in the process of making those decisions.
Give us a weekly update of what's happening?
I can't, yes.
For the council, no, we get questions, public.
Okay.
We don't know what to tell you.
Okay, we'll do that. On a weekly basis, I'll, I'll send something to Mr. Joanne, maybe Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning.
That'd be good. The Delman Young Project, they're all in the building.
We are ahead of schedule, they're waiting on the deal to come in, a bunch has a report on that, we talked about it Monday at our meeting, but they are ahead of schedule on the Delman Young Project, we are waiting for the deal to come in.
Ruth will go on next week? It's a week ahead of schedule, right? Within budget?
Say it again.
Within budget.
Ahead of schedule.
Ahead of schedule. I don't get to say that too much. That's all I've been asked.
And, and real quick, McGruder has sent me, Meridian Activities Center's having their open house this Saturday from 10 to 12, 3300 32nd Avenue.
Something about Saturday's afternoon, too much.
Saturday.
A.G. Council on A.G. and Trump?
Yeah.
I think that's a Saturday, isn't it?
They have their meeting this afternoon, and I would like to say something, we do a lot of things, we try to address, if some youth, to adults, to seniors, if there are seniors, or if there are anyone else out there who feels like there are certain activities that they would like to have, especially in Parks and Rec, please email me or go to Parks and Rec and see Mr. McGruder. We're trying to do as much as we can with the resources we have, but if you all want something, you all have a voice, please tell us, because a lot of these things that Dr. Thomas, you're talking about, some other people talk about, for us to do it, there has to be enough level of people who wanna do that for us to do it, but at the same time, your voices will be heard, so just, just come and holler at us. Mr. Hammond's glad to see you back, too, sir. That's it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our citizen comments, we wanna remind, remind our citizens that you have three minutes to address the council as a whole, and please be respectful. Our first person, Mr. Alan Shute.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to announce that my webpage is built now, it's at alanshute.com, it's for the citizens of Meridian. They can post, they can comment, they can just, but any man they want to on that webpage, they can find out where I've sent you letters, and whether you responded or you didn't, which none of you have yet, you're a tech speed, but that's the way things go anyway. Now, Madam President, you said that you know people that said they'd never build a house in Meridian again?
Buy a house.
Yeah, or buy a house, build a house, buy a house. And, I got our last meeting, or meeting before that, somebody mentioned there was, I think it was 3,000 houses that are empty here in Meridian? Is that correct?
Refilled.
3,000? Yeah, that's a lot of houses empty. Yeah, that's a lot of houses. Anyway, I'd like to remind the audience, the citizens, that in a couple of months, you all, all of you and the mayor, will start your campaigning for the reelection coming in July, so if anyone would like to contact me, who wants to run for mayor, or run for city council, I would appreciate it very much, I'd like to give you my help and support. And, since I can't get no answers out of you guys, I'm just wasting my time standing up here, so. If anyone would go to the webpage and see what's available there for you, make your comments, ask your questions, I'll do what I can to help anybody. Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Second organization is Socrates Garrett Enterprises, Inc.
Good morning.
My name is Wanda, I work for Mr. Garrett, and first of all, he wanted me to come this morning and thank not only the citizens, the council, and the staff of Meridian, but also all the businesses that were involved around our project. In the end, the businesses were extremely supportive of us, and were very kind to us, especially in Phase 3. With all that being said, he also wanted me to mention that he feels a little disagreeing with some decisions that were made in reference to our change order and our time alignment. Given that that decision was made by the party who would be leaving the city legally vulnerable by making those decisions, he just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we felt the plans that we'd been upon, and what we completed, were two separate things. And during the process of this, his words to me were, this is good for the city of Meridian, hang with it, complete it, with the reassurances throughout, that the things that we were doing would be fairly addressed at the end, and we would be given consideration for the changes. And, we're not here to complain, we're here to thank you all for your patience, but we just feel like maybe the matter should be looked into a little bit further, and I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna have our council comments, beginning with Mr. Hammond, who was back with us today.
I don't know if I'm gonna get through this without getting a little facetious, but I've heard a lot about, I've heard a lot about team, I've heard a lot about people checking out your city. I might be the one of the council people that get a lot of these, I get these from other people's ward, so I'm gonna read this, and then I'm gonna comment on it. Randy, something has to be done about the crime rate in Meridian. There's houses for sale, and I've been trying to sell my mother's house for a year and a half now, my real estate agent says, nobody wants to buy a house in the city because of the crime rate. This house has been empty, been broken into several times, I'm tired of spending money fixing broken windows, doors, etc. It's a nice home, I can't sell it, I cut the price in half, can't get anybody to look at it. Everybody wants to live in the county now because of Meridian crime, just raising the salaries is not enough. We need police now, and we need a chink that will take charge and crack down and fix this now. Thanks, Larry Torgas. I've just personally been going through some, I'm trying to figure out... I've just personally been going through some, trying to figure out what our team is all about. And I finally figured out, y'all have seen these commercials with the dental thing and the terminate thing where there are monitors? Well, I hear a lot of spiel about a lot of things up here from a lot of people, but I don't see any action and I don't see anything being done about it. So I'm apologizing to the citizens on my part that we can't get the real problems done. Now, on the other hand, if we get something that's special project or something, just like the special project we just pushed through, even getting our lawyers involved to get a special project or something, well, we do our best to work on that and to do everything we can to push those things through. So all we've done really is give up the last natural habitat we have in Meridian. And of course, I get a lot of people calling me about that, thinking I can do anything about that. And I said, "No, we can't do this. Things we can do." When I was in the hospital recovering from my operation, the surgeon that was on call worked on the last man that was killed in a convenience store lobby. He asked me, he said, "Mr. Hammond, isn't there something we could do about it?" I said, "We can do something about it, but we're not willing to do something about it." And that's the way I feel, and that's the way I've felt for the last year, two years about this council and this administration. We're not willing to fix the big thing, but we'll give long superlatives and long oratory about what should be done and how wonderful this is and how wonderful this is. Folks, it's not wonderful until you fix the problem. The problem right now, people don't feel safe in their own neighborhoods. My house has only been robbed twice, okay? And I'm grateful that my wife wasn't there when it was, but I know a lot of people that call me and tell me, "Mr. Hammond, I'm afraid to stay in my house." I said, "Well, don't worry." I said, "When the children's museum gets built," I said, "You'll be able to take your kids to the kids' museum and everything will be okay." See, this is what people are really going through. You're really right on. You may seem, you know, we always seem like a quack when we say stuff like this, but the reality is the majority of citizens are not pleased, are not pleased at what we're doing here. We got a lot of fluff, we got a lot of superlatives, and I'm sure I'm going to hear more of them after I get done talking. But at the end of the day, we are not doing this right.
The powerful words, Randy. When you say things, you tell the truth, polarize certain people. So I commend you for what you said, and I stand in support of what you said. And although we do disagree on the technicalities of some of the bigger issues, I do agree with your thought process and your willingness to make this city great. Couple things. I think it's very alarming that a contractor that... the contractor that oversaw the downtown drainage project, multimillion dollar downtown drainage project, expresses several emergent concerns after the completion of the project as it relates to the plans that were approved versus what was actually completed and what the finished product looks like. Very concerning. Hope that it's addressed, hope they are communicated with, and we are updated to that communication. Glad to see APAC paving moving forward. Something that we could have implemented a year and a half ago. Nevertheless, Mr. Smith, thank you for your work. Thank you for your attempts to communicate with some of those citizens who expressed displeasure. Thank you. Thank you. You take a lot of questions. You take a lot of heat sometimes, but we appreciate your work. We discussed earlier about community development, and I'm not picking on Mr. Partridge when I say this, I'm not. I think this is something we need to look at as a whole throughout the city, council, mayor's office, the departments. There's a difference, conflict, as it relates to necessity and procedure. We always recognize that there's going to be a need in the city. We always recognize that there are groups of people that we have to satisfy and that we need to make sure are good so that they don't lose money, they have the opportunity for a good job, or they are able to provide for their families. That's necessity. But there's also procedure. How we do that? How we go about taking those steps to get that job done? How we recognize the issues and spot those issues throughout the departments? How we communicate with our employees? And how we communicate with the people outside of these walls as it relates to what they're asking us to do as elected officials and administration in running their city? When people understand, they feel better about what you ask them to do. And they talk less, they're less negative when you've given them the opportunity to remedy their issue, and they still don't resolve the problem. You've got to do better about that. I've been preaching for three years. I've lost hair doing it. It's got to be smarter than what we're doing. Little Public School District supported. Y'all saw the grades in the paper, they were raw. Still support that school district. We believe in our kids. We believe in what those kids can offer our communities, what they, once they get out of the schools. It's up to us to volunteer and to give the time we need so that we're cultivating those kids. A lot of these organizations out here go into the schools and work with those kids, but we need adults and we need parents of those kids to go in and work with those kids as well. That's how we're going to see the difference. Meridian High is going to celebrate, well, Meridian High Football is going to have a game this Friday at Terry. Last game of the season before the playoff start. Basketball season's kicked off, did meet the Wildcats. Oh, that's great. I want to thank all the organizations that provided a safe environment and, to some extent, free environments for kids to go and trick or treat. Ran by two of them yesterday, Mount Olive and Walmart, but there were several of them. Churches, 501(c)(3)'s, and just resident citizens who wanted to do for the community. So I commend all of them. Let's focus more on the bigger picture, what we need to do to make the necessities of life great for our citizens, and focus less on what we need to do to get back in here next year. Let's do that.
Okay. We do have a crime problem. Police do an excellent job in catching these folks, but what happens after they catch them, I think, sometimes may be part of our problem. There need to be consequences for misbehavior and crime. There need to be consequences for misbehavior when you're in school. Maybe adding some more police will help with that. There are a lot of people who don't care about other people. Arrest, statistics, or action. Past that, it's a real problem. It's a real problem. Sometimes they're back on the street before police have time to feel like they're the poets. But hopefully another 30 police, more community policing, those type things be good. You mentioned the public schools. We're a D-rated school district. Dr. Carter, I think, is making every effort, and you've heard that from several of us, to improve that rating. The schools can provide the opportunity, but it's up to the children to take advantage of that opportunity. The teacher's responsibility is provide that opportunity, provide the methods and material, but it's up to the student to learn. You can't pour it in them. Some people think we have a stuff and spit type education program. You stuff it in them and expect them to spit it out. There's a lot more to education than that, and the children are the ones responsible for learning. The schools are doing a good job, I think, in providing the opportunity, but they have to take advantage of that opportunity. The Meridian Public School District has the most comprehensive curriculum offered perhaps in the state of Mississippi. So there are a lot of opportunities there, just like in the city. There are a lot of opportunities, but you can't force people to take advantage of opportunities. That's their choice. We have an outstanding community college. We have a university here. We're one of the few cities where you can go and finish an advanced degree and never leave home. We have about five to six thousand college students in this town between Community College and Mississippi State University. So there are a lot of opportunities there. The Riley Center, perhaps, I'd put their programming against almost any city, particularly a city of our size. It's outstanding offering. A lot of us can afford some of those programs, but the offerings are there if you want. MCC has an arts and letters program that you can afford. Meridian High School has concerts, they have drama programs, theater programs, but you have to take advantage of it. The Temple Theater, tremendous theater with a lot of opportunities that are there. Rogers doing an excellent job trying to provide more programs. You have outstanding entertainment there. The art museum. Many cities our size would love to have an art museum with the availability of the things we have there, the exhibits, the programs, the educational programs, just like the Riley Center provides a lot of educational programs. Now, many cities of our size have a symphony orchestra. We do have a symphony orchestra that's there, provide an excellent program. You bring in artists and musicians from throughout the nation to perform there and do concerts. The Riley Center, again, programs that are there. The Meridian Little Theater. We have some things in the wrong, but we have a lot of things that are good. Sometimes, though, you have to take advantage of it, just like I said with the schools. The opportunity is there, it's up to the student to take advantage of that opportunity, and it's up sometimes, sometimes they don't have the political support. They don't have a person at home that's encouraging. Some of them, I think, are just happy the way they are. We can't fix that, but we can provide every opportunity we can while they are at school. And I think Dr. Carter's doing an excellent job, as far as I can tell, in her short term as superintendent of schools of providing that, dealing with the public, meeting with the public. So again, people have to take advantage of opportunities. Yes, we have some problems. We do have problems, but I think we have a lot of opportunity out there, all of a sudden. So, you know, there are some good things going on in this city.
We want to thank everybody for coming out this morning. I want to thank Parks and Rec for being diligent to get something over on South Side as far as it relates to James Shanning Park. For our inner-city children, the lights look great over there. I'm getting calls just about every night about how bright it is and how that is helping deter some of the activities that was happening on that side of town. So I appreciate it. And little things like lights help with crime. Little things like communication and neighborhood watches and, you know, having your children meet the curfews and doing those things. We can't put everything off on one man and one department, but we, as a community, have to do what we need to do to make sure that we are in line as well. We work better and we win when we work together. Don't forget about open house. We also have, this is the holiday season coming up. There's a lot of things that we want to see happen in Meridian. I want to encourage the citizens to shop local during this holiday season. I know you can get it easier online and all that kind of stuff, but shop at our mall, shop downtown, shop at Walmart, shop local so that those dollars can stay here and then give us the ability to do more. Support Meridian Public School District academically. We talk a lot about the scores. My child plays basketball and all that good stuff, but we need to support Meridian Public School District academically. And I'll always say it, I believe it, if Meridian Public School District fails, we're all going to fail. God bless you.
Let me next one other thing. Mayor talked about voting. So I was elected, the first time I ran for office, by one vote. So you people out there that say my one vote doesn't count, it counts. I'm here, either good or bad.
Let me say one more thing, since this is in him's ward, and I know nobody's going to give these people the opportunity. Said, "We live in the community around 49th and Fifth Street."
I've read the letter.
You've read the letter?
Yes, sir. And we've already addressed, we are addressing that matter. Yes, sir.
These are other people that have to live.
We get the same information that you get. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Worried about all these abandoned trailers and people in them?
Yes, sir.
We've got that all over, and we need to do something about it.
We are.
We are?
We are. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. It has been addressed. God bless you. Leading is adjourned.